Good morning. It is 9:02 on Monday, February 25th, 2019, and I'm calling for our county jurisdiction to order. Today we have Alan Burkholder from Sacramento Hills who can do our indications. So just please stand and remain standing.
Father, we want to come to you in reverence and thanksgiving. We want to thank you for letting us live in the greatest nation in the world. Thank you for letting us live in this city. Father, I thank you for this commission and I ask you that you would fill them with your great peace and wisdom. We pray that you'd be here today and ask you that you would guide them and lead them. Father, I thank you for everyone in this room that's helping Manny Tamorillo. We thank you for our first responders. We ask you that you protect them. I ask you that you bless these people's families. Lord, you would give them good health. You would just give them the great wisdom to lead us and guide us. And we thank you for that in Jesus' name.
(Inaudible) United States of America, unto the rebuttal for which stands our nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Inaudible)
All right. First thing on the agenda is approval of minutes from February 11th, 2019, jurisdiction court, and January 14th, 2019. Issues or corrections, so approved. Vouchers to consider and act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers are subject to the term of not being allowed to be approved. February 6th, 2019, 30th, February 20th, 2019. Check numbers, check numbers are very same. They're all the same except the amounts are correct. Okay. Check numbers 1-8-4-4-7-7, 3-1-8-4-6-9-7, and wire transfer is 1205, the amount of $1,737,587. Second for discussion.
I have a couple of questions. Judge Fundman. Carrie, page 5 of 30, check number 1-8-4-5-4-4, Architexas, $31,000. Is this the final payment on that project? Is everything resolved? I'm hoping. Okay. Page 7 of 30, at the top, the tiers one and tiers two pledged amounts, and then we have the amendment this morning with tiers one, tiers two. So I just want to make sure I have the correct values for tiers one and tiers two.
Tiers one, Potter County's amount is 5.51. Tiers two is 5.48.
Okay. Then page 23 of 30, looks like wire number 1-2-0-5. In the middle of the page, Dillers for those sport coats and dress shirts for county court at law number one. That's still allowed in our policy. We've talked over the years about revising that policy. It is still there. Okay. Let me start here. Judge, you mentioned we might be revising that policy. Who is...
We have several things that we're talking about revising. A lot of things. Yeah, we just haven't gotten with the... Okay. Thank you. I have a motion in second. We're going to skip down to really fast to settle law and get back to court. Number nine, just to certificate of completion for Judge Weaver and Judge, oh, it's just Judge Weaver. Sorry. To recognize certificate of completion for the Public Information Act, Oh, the meetings, that was a barrel of fun, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. I enjoyed it, Ron.
So recognized. And then on number 11, county court at law number one jurisdiction to act on proposed resolution for amendment of section 25.19 of 2, the Texas government code, to extend limited felony jurisdiction to Potter County Court at law number one. Judge, we really have anything more to say about that? This is just something that Judge Sermon and I talked about last year. We got it at least on the books.
Your Honor, I'm aware of what you two spoke about. This is just an opportunity to let felony matters be resolved when 60% of our judges are gone 50% of the time in Randall County. So it's just, I'm sure that the sheriff will point out that we need more felony people moving cases out the door. That's all it is.
And this is, this is in the legislative body right now. They're doing work on this right now and it's going to be...
Port Price has this prepared. He might need it posted according to the county attorney, and it's only agreed matters.
Okay. I have a question if I need to. So will this also apply for county court at law two?
Not necessarily. Not yet.
Is the plan to extend to both courts?
Well, here's the thing. I got this, I've talked before about this, got it on the books to do, and then Judge Sermon said, well, why don't we do both? For us to go back and ask them to start over and to do both to do this one is another session, another session. So we're going to go with this because Judge Hand is not experienced in criminal work. So, Ron?
I had plenty of discussions with Judge Hand, and he felt comfortable with this until I get his sealings, so to speak, under oath. And if by agreement only, the district courts can't delegate, if I have openings on my staff, I can agree to hear felony pleas. I also can shut the door and go, I'm full. I can't do any more for you.
So by agreement only, that section, help me understand, who is the agreement with? What is that by agreement only?
Constitutionally, I can't hear felony matters. So this creates the opportunity for me to hear a felony matter. Then, once it's there, the agreement of the parties, the district court and the prosecutor can send matters open to my court if I so desire. And I so desire.
That would literally help the whole...
Yeah, this isn't cake. It's just work.
But we approve the regulation.
Thank you.
Thank you. My big excuse, Your Honor?
Yes, sir. I have a motion in second. I'll favor it. Okay, just go back to number three. Insurance report, the regular insurance report.
There's nothing unusual on the insurance report, but I did want to make the court aware that late last week I got a notification of a high claim that's going to be coming through this week. On the claims funding, in the amount of $69,328.87. I have requests of information as to whether we can determine this will be an ongoing situation for an isolated incident, and I have not heard back yet.
So Carrie, hypothetically, I say, is it usual?
Well, it is not at this point, but down the road, if, if there are continued high claims, we may be in a situation where we again have to move money. But we just have to wait and see what the, what the situation is with, of this claim and other claims that are coming down the pipeline.
Number four, tax office to consider and make upon tax refunds for early voting taxes. It's just the usual thing. Should I show it here? Camera. Just the usual thing, nothing unusual about it. Sorry.
I make a motion that we approve the overpayment of taxes as presented.
I have a motion in second. I'll favor it. From the five treasurers, we report to you the 4th month of February 4th. Okay, this morning, A and B, we have $20,446,689.66, and we're earning 2.65. In tax pool, we have $411,793.78, and we're earning 2.39. In tax pool prime, we have $22,404,506.12, earning 2.59. In Texas class, we have $1,797,459.95, earning 2.65. So our total cash this morning is $45,060,449.51. And I have received a notice from Sherry to let us know that as far as collections, the shared tax dollars were 93.16%. This is about what we were discussing.
And the, the top 10 taxpayers, last time we chatted, we were, the timing of, we were expecting those to come in, and we received all of those.
Number six, elections to consider and approve early voting locations and hours for May 4th, 2019, general and special elections. B, to consider and approve the appointment of officer for Central County Station for the May 4th election. C, to consider and approve the presiding judge for early voting ballot board for May 4th. D, $2,000 for early mortgages for the May 4th, 2019, general and special elections. And E, to consider and approve public county elections, consulting the Star Wars elections for children on the Discovery Center on May 4th. You don't have anything to do, do you?
Not anything. I guess first thing would be the appointing of election judges and establishing the hours for the early voting for the May 4th election. And statistically, it's Monday through Friday, April the 22nd through 26th, and Monday and Tuesday, April the 29th and 30th. We are wanting to hold all locations open on that Monday and Tuesday, the 29th and 30th. And all the expenses from this election are being paid for by the entities that are involved.
How does the early voting hours, I know there's always discussion of our hours, Randall County's hours, are they aligned this time?
Probably yes and no. I'm not sure that she's doing the seven to seven at all of her sites on the second, on those two days.
Questions?
Will we approve the early voting locations and hours for the May 4th, 2019, general and special elections? Sir.
I have a motion in second. I'll favor it.
The next one is appointing the officers for Central County Station, and they are all of the usual suspects that we would normally have on Election Day. It's a Saturday, May the 4th.
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of officers for Central County Station for May 4th, 2019, general and special elections as presented.
I have a motion in second. I'll favor it.
The next one is appointing the early voting ballot board, and with the presiding judge being there, the one thing that's kind of up in the air there is the maximum number of clerks. I put that at six. Right now, I don't need but three, because we only have about 30 people who apply to vote by mail. And what, and whereas in New England, we had over 2,000 that were voting by mail. Our population gets so used to an entity sending out the little pre-populated postcards and they sign, and then we told, we tell everyone that they expired on December 31st of last year, and if they want to vote by mail in 2019, they must reapply. And so, right now, I don't need nearly that many clerks. I don't know if any group or individual is going to be doing a mass mail out. I don't know if people are going to look up at some point and say, I'd like a ballot by mail, but right now, we are way behind the curve on that one.
So do you want to change it to three?
No, because, because it's such a maximum, we're not obligated to go to six. I just left myself some room, just in case.
I make a motion that we approve the presiding judge in early voting ballot board for May 14, 2019, general and special elections.
I have a motion in second. I'll favor it.
The next one is, I just let you guys know of the early voting, Election Day sites, and we did have one change, but I've been in church at Christ, had church activities going on on that Saturday, May the 4th, and they were unable to accommodate us that day. So in lieu of establishing a completely new site for that day, we will be opening Casey Carpet One, which is an early voting site, to accommodate voters on Election Day. No, they're just more of an acknowledgement. Those have to be approved by those that, by the entities. So I just, that was just to kind of let everybody know. And then the last thing I brought to you because I'm requesting to take three pieces of our equipment out that we would not normally be taking out. And this is to do a Star Wars election at the Discovery Center on May the 4th, as in, May the 4th be with you. And the idea is that since we're not working in, we're not voting in schools anymore, kids don't actually see voting in action like they used to see. And so Discovery Center was very excited about doing this. I think they will actually be providing the workers who will be helping the children, and nobody, you know, the election equipment will be just outside where we are, where it can be watched. We're hoping that the people that they use to help the kids will be in costumes. But any, any child can come in to vote, Randall County, Potter County, whatever county, they'll be able to vote in this election. And some of the measures that are on this is, would be, are things like, which Star Wars creature would be the best pet? What Star Wars character is most like your teacher? And we did not put Jonathan Haidt in there, so it's very nice of us. So you get the idea, but the idea is to engage kids in it, in what we're doing, in what our cost is, getting out of pocket, although I am ordering an $8 dollar roll of stickers that says future voter for the kids. So, but I do feel like I need you guys' permission because I'm using the equipment.
You said they'll be a toy. I think that's important, that it is a toy.
No, it's not a toy. And it has to stay with...
And you mean to take it somewhat seriously?
Yes, correctly.
I guarantee you, the kids nowadays know a lot about how you're doing this. If you like to do this.
Yes, they probably think they ask for drinks, so.
I will be approving the used equipment at Discovery Center.
Second.
Good idea.
All in favor of your motion?
Well, then what are the hours of the event?
7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., just exactly the same as the early voting, I mean, the Election Day location.
Thank you, Melan. All right, number seven, retirement. Two dozen houses retiring with life. You have focused management for 34 years at the extraordinary service of Potter County. Do you want to, you have something to say before we give you your plaque, or do you want to?
Me. Me decide.
Okay.
You may decide that you don't want to give me the plaque. I'd like to first start off, thanking you, Judge Tanner, Commissioner Kelly, working with me on my medical leave, a time off that I was only going to take six weeks, that's 17. So thank you all for working with me. My wife Debbie is not able to be here today. One of our granddaughters has a major medical condition in October, and she's with her, so I have my little son, Mickey, sitting beside me back here. One thing I just wanted to say was, through all the years I've been in Potter County, y'all forgive me, I get a motion, history, history is something that's lost, people overlook, they don't care about. And if I came to work here, that meant, actually, prior to me coming to work here back in 1985, I turned around, picked up the newspaper, and was hoping to get a job at Rome Bridge. I had a heavy equipment before, they had a job opening, so I called the phone number, got over to Gene Turner, maintenance director at that time. He went, what can you do? And I told him, you know, come down, I want to talk to you. That was on Wednesday. I came down Thursday, talked to him, and told him I could do construction, maintenance work and everything. So he just hired me to do construction for Potter County. He went, can you start an opening now? I started Friday, and there was a build-out and application for Potter County. So that's not an easy thing to work back in compared to where they are today. This is something very unique. I know gently knows this, and very few do. Back, the security office down here, that was our maintenance office. And that was the maintenance office, the shop, the break room, we did everything out of the security office, and you had to move it. First day on the job, I was sitting there, Gene Turner, our boss, was sitting at his desk, turned around and looked at me and two other people. And he went, y'all, we have a problem. What's that? He went, we got too many Ickies in the room. We got a Ricky, a Vicky, and a Mickey. My name is Mickey. At that time, he went, you're called Mike? I've been called Mike for 34 years, the situation. At that time, we had 14 personnel in the day crew, we had seven on the night crew. We maintained 38 buildings, all county buildings. We maintained all the buildings at the tri-state fairgrounds from the old sportatorium, all the coliseum, we maintained them within our department. At that time, whenever I first came to work here, the maintenance department was a laughing stock in the county. I mean, everybody made fun of us, and I just couldn't put up with that. Not by the way that my dad raised me. Our uniforms were a puky green, like the hospital green you see painted on walls, mismatched uniforms. At that time, I went to my boss, and man, you got to do something to help us get rid of this image and everything. He did. He went and got his white coveralls. White coveralls had stenciled in, on the back of it, in black, inmate. We wore white coversalls and name on it for a long time. So, I mean, Kathy Pullins down here on Pope Street, we kept that company business. If we could buy epoxy, buy oxes, we would, and bait and wire by the rivers. That's all we used here. We did not believe in actually repairing something or fixing it. We put a lot of Band-Aids and stuff. That was the mentality for many, many years, and that's something that I wanted to change someday. We'd have a new elected county judge. We went from 10 people, on the day crew, down to four in a matter, matter of a few months. There was only four of us here for a long time that grew up and had to take care of Potter County. We had to work on these buildings. I was a young kid at that time. During that time, we gave up taking care of the sheriff's department, all of their facilities, the fire station, Rome Bridge, plus all the fairgrounds properties, including the grounds maintenance. The grounds maintenance was hired out at that time. So at that time, I finally had the opportunity, we went about for six years without somebody officially being in charge of this department. I was put in a position with that to play, if you want to do something, prove, I hated that comp to be a man, too. And for six years, I did the very best that I could to change the image of this department. At that time, I carried the title, facilities manager, secretary, whatever it may be, I carried that title. I did everything in order to change the image. Commissioners' Court members, I've served underneath every position here at one time or another. Commissioner Vaughn, I've served underneath your precinct, two different commissioners, Commissioner Church, two different ones. Judge Tanner, one different, County Judge, Commissioner McGill, one time underneath you, and Commissioner Kelly, three different commissioners in that precinct right there. I've enjoyed working with each and every one of y'all. My dad always taught me, you know, hold your head up high because you're representing, whenever you stand before the Commissioners' Court, and you're doing work in Potter County, do it with pride. And leaving here at Potter County, it was kind of hard for me. I'll be giving you back 275 days of sick leave. If you ever do anything with sick leave, I pushed this issue with Commissioner Vaughn for many years, and I spoke to Commissioner McGill about this a long time ago. Take that sick leave and try to figure out something to do to give people as a reward for not abusing sick leave. I missed seven days of sick leave up until I had my surgery here, then a day and 34 years. I just did not believe in abusing. Annual leave, you're going to get 40 days of that back. I hated being called a maintenance guy. That just went through me. Every person in our department is a respected technician in their own field. I mean, they're, they're actually professionals at what they do. The assistant position that I have, I've had five different people hold it throughout the years. 34 years I've been here, I've had over 90 people come and go, whether getting fired or moving on to greater passions and everything. The position for which is on the agenda today, my position, is about a year and eight months ago, Commissioner Kelly and I had the opportunity to, we did post that, that is the first time in all of the years that I'd ever asked for assistance to come in and be with me as I went through an interview. That was the reason behind me doing that, because I knew at that time right there, that whomever would come in, if they could prove to y'all that they were worthy to be here, that they would still continue to be and move into my position and everything. One thing that was explained to everybody that applied to that job, there's a fence right here. On this side of the fence, for the first six months, Commissioner Kelly, he, he explained this very clearly to every applicant that came in. On the first six months, you've got to know how to be able to do projects. You've got to have that mentality to know how to pick it up if you don't know how to do it. You got to be able to move forth with it and everything. The other six months, we put you on the other side of fence. You had to know how to manage your department. You had to know how to speak with, how to stand up for the Commissioners' Court, and to manage everybody. You know, the Nick Niswade, he not, he come in, he's a young person with the mentality that young people bring today. Y'all, that's one of the reasons why I'm moving on from Potter County. I'm still the old fashioned way. Times are changing. You've got a new, younger generation coming in that can bring new things, and I probably cannot give you and everything. I've seen that change coming for the last two or three years and everything. Y'all have a very hard decision to make here today, whether you come through the position. As I've mentioned to several people, I would recommend a go-ahead place, you know, Nick was in that position and everything. Projects, projects come and go. I mean, they'll be here, and then they're gone three or four years later. You need somebody that can make a career out of it. That was my intent when I came to work there, to make a career out of Potter County. I sent an email out last week regarding this thing. There's people that just want jobs. There's people that want careers. If y'all can do anything to change this, to make Potter County a place that people want a career, do that. Those people I've mentioned that's come and gone, many of them were just people who want a job. If you don't like what I do, fire me. I will find another job. The ones that made it a career, made it through the rough times and everything. I will be back on March the 8th. Judge Tanner, Commissioner Kelly's allowed me to do this. I will be starting my new career in March 1st. I will be back, back on March the 8th. Y'all kind of Santa Fe building, we're going to have a shed, shed and dig over there. I hope now, wherever you want to call it.
Don't say no to him.
Put this on your calendar. I mentioned this to you the other day, Judge Tanner. August the 5th, 2025, is the day that the time capsule will need to be opened by the Potter County Commissioners' Court in the Santa Fe building. Many of y'all were around, placed items in that to be opened. In closing, I would just like to thank the Commissioners for blessing me with the opportunity to have a career in Potter County, and I respect each and every one of you for what you do. I guess for decisions to make, many times I hated your decisions, many times you hated my decisions. That's just part of what we do. Thank you. I will say this about Mike. I've never met a man that was so meticulous about his job. Everything that he ever touched, he wanted to make sure that it was done completely and done correctly. I don't know anybody that dislike Mike. Well, maybe the couple contractors that take care of it. But other than that, thank you, Mike. It was a wonderful job that you've done. I did, I'm going to compliment you to oversee what you're doing. Thank you.
Mike, I've known you since, like, many, very, many, and I can, there's many, many words that describe you, but to sneak out, I'm loyal and honest, and I appreciate your commitment and commitment.
And I would echo comments just in terms of the integrity that you have continued to just hold over the years, and not only from a project perspective, but really your conviction and what you feel and why you feel one way versus another, even in terms of the disagreement. So it's something so valuable. So, um, it's something so valuable, and you stay very convicted, and that really follows with your integrity. So, thank you for holding the line.
Just want to say thank you. Appreciate you. You led us through some tough projects. You're a strong person to do that. I've seen you from two different sides as the, as the department had, and there was times I didn't always agree with him or appreciate what you did, but as I've got on this side, I know that what you did is important, really, for everything. Thank you, Commissioner.
Constantly a professional. Phenom. You definitely, uh... The gold by saying, you think of facilitation, certainly, you've always prepared my head. And, uh... I said to you many times, and I said this morning, that it was always my house that I'd be down before you were. So, I appreciate how you've done to this county and, uh... Though I'm saying that this county is much more developed and you have pushed it into the twenty-first century, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Do you guys want to come up and just stand with you?
Yeah, let's really begin.
Come on, you guys can help.
Yeah, and your son.
Dawn, four of the guys.
Go ahead.
Julie's got my camera, so send it your way. I'll get me the watchers to make sure you're running. I'll make sure you're running. Yes, so, here we go.
Get somebody on the ground.
Knock it up. You thought you used to say these, yeah. Yeah. It's the grass on the ground.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, Mike. Thank you. It's great.
Barry Billups. Barry.
First program, Andrew.
I know. First one doesn't have to last, huh? Number eight, county courts recognize the completion of the five twenty hours of continuing the education for twenty eighteen, describing section fifty-one point zero point six oh five, the Texas Department of Education. So, recognized, thank you. Number ten, subdivision plat approval to consider an act upon subdivision plat prepared by pressure and associates surveyed for judgment submission in Bushland, Texas, being two-track subdivision totaling two point three eight acres. Uh... If you talk to this. Do you want to just let me talk about it?
It's a, it's a medical office in Bushland, and it's just a subdivision and contract and, and there's no installations, no roads.
Okay.
It's required by what?
Okay. I have the plat involved, it's on the sign, I'm just, I'm going to, I need a motion.
Uh... Commissioner Church, I'm assigning awareness project. I'm going to, I just want to make sure.
Well, I know that the medical office is being, it's already in the process, so I move that we approve this, uh... Change in the subdivision plat. Sir.
Motion in second, all in favor of Judge. Five zero, please. Item number twelve, penhandle, Texas Penhandle Centers to consider an act upon the reappointment of Mr. Larry Adams to the TPC Board of Trustees for a two-year term, beginning in April first, twenty nineteen. This is just something that we do every two years. And I ask you to be able to.
Judge, my only comment, Judge, is it would be nice to maybe have a report every now and then. I'm not sure what, what they go on or what their agenda looks like, just every now and then, to the Commissioners' Court as we appoint.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve reappointing Mr. Larry Adams to the TPC Board of Trustees for a two-year term.
Sir.
Has a motion in second, all in favor of Judge. Zero. Item number thirteen, Potter County Government Day to hear a page on the sixth page on Potter County Government Day schedule, probably eight.
So, you have a, um, a one pager in your packet. The times are changing. You have changed just a little bit, but what did anything, I wanted to get you to start in end times. Certainly an invitation to the full court to attend us, to attend with us throughout the day, uh... But really, at the top of the room, so that each commissioner can meet with their student representative, uh... To just introduce themselves, and then at the end of the day, which is when we hand out certificates, uh... But the format is changing a little bit, so I just wanted the court to have what's in motion right now. The committee has met.
What's changed?
Um... So, we normally take a tour at the Sheriff Admin Building, which is the longer there. So, what we do.
It's still very.
Sheriff locations changed.
It's a long walk.
It's just a long walk.
Part of the new wellness plan.
It's the L C.
Teachers don't like it.
Sheriff is very funny this morning. Um... So, that has changed a little bit, but we are, are certainly working with the sheriff to, the command vehicles and sort of getting them, those kind of parked out there. So, the, uh... Some of the sessions have changed just a little bit. And then we're going to end, uh... With Judge Ward and the location award that's going to end in the jury room, uh... To accommodate some of that size. So, I just wanted everybody to have the format, um... But to block your calendar if you're able to join us. I know the month of April will be busy with us hosting, um... The conference as well.
Okay. Thank you. Item fourteen, IT server room, you heard update on information technology server.
So, Brandon and Nick, um... I think will take us for the heat load assessment and the temperature update of what's going on in the server room.
Yes, yes. So, we, uh... We met with some consultants who were bringing in, um... And had several suggestions that we could do, um... All of which I think are great ideas. Uh... One, we have the floor tiles in there, and one of the suggestions that they made, we need to improve those floor tiles, so there's not enough airflow through what we have now. So, um... That was one of the ideas that they presented. Second, we need to keep, you know, divide the racks that we have in there and keep them separate. So, so their suggestion was either we move them together, or we, they have like a little metal screen kind of thing you can put in between them, which I think might be a great idea. The idea of it is that you keep the cold air on the inside and then push it all on there. So, right now, it's just all the hot and cold mixes, um... And you don't want that. You want cold air going into the, the services and sucks it through the, the fans and then, you know, keep, keep them separated. So, so the screens in between and then inside the racks themselves, if we have any blank spaces, we can put a little, an actual blank to, again, keep the, those temperatures separated. Um... The other thing is, one of the things they brought up is that the lever unit that we have in the cooling unit now, if something happens to it, there is no, I mean, that's what we have. So, there's no backup for that, really, um... Which we need to fix. So, um... I think that'll probably wouldn't be the biggest cost of what we're looking at. The other stuff, I don't think is going to be very expensive, but I haven't seen our, you know, they were going to give us a cost for all the, all the above, so I haven't seen that yet.
All I've seen is the cost breakdown of a new lever unit. I haven't seen, they're actually a vendor, so we can buy everything from them, we can take model numbers, we can go, you know, get it at other places. The first thing we sent was, we, prices. We feel that's the last thing that you should worry about unless you put a redundancy. There's also talking possible, even sort of just building, you know. There's a lot of things that are happening right now, so we said, "Let's start with the floor tiles." You know, lots of things in the floor tiles. Said, "You're going to see drastic improvements there before you start spending, you know, people."
The once the temperature in the room now, where are we sitting at?
It's still about the same. Yeah, it's still about the same. They get eighty-ish.
And we want it sixty-ish.
Sure. Yeah.
Bring it here.
Yeah. Just sit outside, but that'd be fine. Open them a little. Yeah. So, that's, uh... Like I say, I mean, the redundancy of having two different units in there would be a good idea. I mean, we built that kind of in everything, we do all the servers that we actually have, and those racks have power, they have dual connections, they have, you know, all those kind of things that just makes sense to have a secondary, you know, backup.
Just as a amount of inquiry, the floor tiles, uh... If you wanted to get it anywhere.
So, you have a rail, a normal IT server room. The, the, with data, I think, in a normal setting, in a new building, they build, uh... The L E C, theirs is about a two-foot range door. The unit pushes air through underneath and up, okay? He's ceiling, his D is five foot, three foot. Ours is about four and a half inches. Uh... When they moved into this building, that's, that's a leftover server room from, you know, eighties and seventies, they have, you know, up on the second of the timeframe, so it's been adapted. There's a lot of airflow getting through there, okay? So, so the number that was this floor tile, that make up that range door, you know, slots for coming in, you know, like a jigsaw, just to let air out. Well, they actually, now they have, uh... CFM rated registered tiles, okay? So, if you've got one thousand CFMs coming from your unit, you can have that same CFM amount in your floor tiles, whether it's, you know, one hundred or however you can bind it up. That, that way you're, you know, if you, if you stop the airflow, you're going to just put back pressure, back standard pressure along your motor, and it's not, it's just not going to work. So, that's it.
It won't be that a good picture.
I don't know if that helps, or.
I don't.
Look at him.
And the only reason I've kept it on the agenda, um... Certainly the temperature being a concern, but, uh... You know, technology is something that you really don't worry about as long as you can still come into work and it works just fine, but when it goes down, you're very aware of it, so I don't want any of that to surprise anyone, and I want to kind of keep this on high priority because of that temperature in that room. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you. Number fifteen, formal bid one one seven six dash one nine road materials to consider an act upon, or an R F P one one seven six dash one nine road materials, the fingers on the board are in connection. Chris.
Uh, that's once a year, we allow for this. Um... We made some changes from last year to this year, uh... Just making it easier for, uh... Sebastian and his crew to get mainly hot mix quicker and in smaller batches, so...
So, you awarded it to?
Awarded it the three different companies. So, have a primary award and a secondary award. Primary is, but secondary is that we can't get it from the first. We have backup plan.
I make a motion that we approve the road and branch vendor recommendation.
Sir.
I have a motion in second, all in favor of Judge. Thank you. Number sixteen, R F P one one seven nine dash one nine elevator services to consider an act upon, avoiding request for proposal, R F P one one seven nine dash one nine elevator services to American Elevator, contract term March one, twenty nineteen, through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, with options to renew for two additional one-year contracts.
Me again?
Our, our.
I didn't know if you were going to ask, I was just going to go.
It doesn't matter. Whoever wants to take it.
Um... We actually, we went away from, um... Getting a, a vendor through a co-op that we did for the last probably five years and put it out for bid, uh... Which is going to save us approximately.
Ten, ten thousand dollars.
Um... We had a walkthrough of all the leads. We had five different companies show up for the walkthrough. We had three that actually submitted bids. Um... American Elevator, which actually has a, a location here in town. They, they bought a warehouse type of facility, uh... Just right down the block from the Santa Fe building, uh... Is the one that was recommended. Uh... They're actually the least expensive out of the three that came in. American also does, uh... City, and I spoke to the city, and they're very happy in service of things now.
Who was the vendor before that we used through the co-op?
Tony.
And so there, I remember some service issues, some call time issues around the elevators, but.
That was the main reason for, for redoing. Our technician was great, but in my opinion, it was kind of hard to drive, so I, I made for the management and the salesmen, the contract negotiation, it just wasn't, it wasn't handled well, and, uh... We had an elevator for, it was flat, it was down, it was painful, you know, and it was just, well, that's just how it is, that's how it is, so Chris did some digging and, uh... We started to walk through, it's based off of their contract that they should have been honoring, and, uh... The technician through American is actually here, Eric is here, so, uh... Is, is Tony, is Tony the boss? Is he the representative? What is his topic?
Tony is over, uh... The American Elevator Division here in Amarillo, and he is also the construction superintendent in Oklahoma City. I physically run our office here in Amarillo. I oversee all of our facilities.
You'll need, you'll need Tony, you know, key, like.
Thank you. Well, for a person who's been stuck in the elevator before, uh... I can honestly say that response time is key.
That was my first, that was my first time in town, and I could never run out of town at the same time. Maybe not the first fifteen days here, and I'm not.
It wasn't awful, but.
It wasn't.
It wasn't really.
It wasn't awful. You made a call.
It was, it was a long four days. It felt like four days. It was only about forty-five minutes, but.
The strange thing was, before I knew, my man in Red River, he called me from everywhere and said, "The judge is stuck in the ghetto."
It was comical now. What is that? I make a motion that we approve the request for proposal one one seven nine dash one nine elevator services to American Elevator.
Sir.
I have a motion in second, all in favor of Judge. And it's Tony, is that your name, Mike? Tony?
Mine's Derek.
Derek, I don't know your face. I want you to go by, okay? That's all. I just want to see your face.
We actually have two technicians here local, and then I have access to about twelve others within about three hours, three hours window.
Thank you. Number seventeen, equipment purchase cost number two, to consider act upon purchase of the following items from WatchGuard, Insta HD camera bundle, model number V I S E X U F B U N E I O, at a cost of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars each. Phones are budgeted in the general phone. This was the same agenda item? Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, he has three of them. Forgotten last time, and, uh... I think it was out of time, so.
Okay. Okay. Need a motion?
Move to approve the use of personal item from WatchGuard, this is HD camera bundle, model number V I S E X U F B U N E I O, at a cost of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars each. Phones are budgeted in the general phone.
This was the same agenda item?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, he has three of them. Forgotten last time, and, uh... I think it was out of time, so.
Okay. Okay. Need a motion?
Move to approve the use of personal item from WatchGuard, this is HD camera bundle, model number V I S E X U F B U N E I O, at a cost of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars each. Phones are budgeted in the general phone.
This was the same agenda item?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, he has three of them. Forgotten last time, and, uh... I think it was out of time, so.
Okay. Okay. Need a motion?
Move to approve all items listed. I'm going to approve all items listed.
Second, for a quick discussion, Judge, um... I, I just, I wanted to call out item B two, uh... Just a little concerned about not posting the position, and I certainly honor Nick, or honor Mike's request about who you'd like to, to fill that seat.
So, um, that was one of the ideas that they presented. Second, we need to keep, you know, divide the racks that we have in there and keep them separated. So, so their suggestion was either we move them together or we, they have like a little metal screen kind of thing you can put in between them, which I think might be a good idea. The idea of it is that you keep the cold air on the inside and then push it all on there. So right now it's just all the hot and cold mixes. Um, and you don't want that. You want cold air going into the, the services, sucks it through the, the fans and then, you know, keep, keep them separated. So, so the screens in between and then inside the racks themselves, if we have any blank spaces, we can put a little, an actual blank to, again, keep the, those temperatures separated. Um, the other thing is, one of the things they brought up is that the lever unit that we have in the cooling unit now, if something happens to it, there is no, I mean, that's what we have. So there's no backup for that, really, um, which we need to fix. So, um, I think that'll probably be the biggest cost of what we're looking at. The other stuff I don't think is gonna be very expensive. But I haven't seen our, you know, they're bringing in some cost for all the, all the above, so I haven't seen that yet.
All I've seen is the cost breakdown of a new lever unit. I haven't seen, they're actually a vendor. So we can buy everything from them, we can take model numbers, we can go, you know, get it at other places. The first thing we sent was the lever prices. We feel that's the last thing that you should worry about unless you have a redundancy. There's also talking possible, sort of building, you know. There's a lot of things that are after that now, so we said, let's start with the four cars. You know, lots of things. Said, you're gonna see drastic improvements there before you start spending, you know, people.
The once the temperature in the room now, where are we sitting at?
It's still about the same, yeah, it's still about the same.
Eighty-ish. And we wanted sixty-ish.
Sure.
Bring it here.
Yeah, just sit outside. That'd be fine. Open a minute. Yeah, so that's, uh, like I say, I mean, the redundancy of having two different units in there would be a good idea. I mean, we built that kind of in everything, we do all the servers that we actually have in those racks have power, they have your connections, they have, you know, all those kind of things. It just makes sense to have a secondary, you know, backup.
Just as a round inquiry, the four tabs, uh, so.
If you wanted to get it anywhere.
So you have a raised door in the normal high tea server room. The, I think, Stephen Williams with data, I think, is doing this. In a normal setting, in a new building, they build, uh, the LEC, theirs is about a two-foot raised door. The unit pushes air through underneath and up, okay? He's seen them as deep as five foot, three foot, ours is about four and a half inches. Uh, I think when they moved into this building, that's, that's a leftover server room from, you know, eighties, seventies, they have, you know, open on the second of the timeframe. So it's been adapted, there's a lot of airflow keeping through there, okay? So, so the number that goes with four cars, to make up that raised door, you know, slots for coming in, you know, like a jigsaw, just to let air out. Well, actually now they have, uh, CFM rated registered cars, okay? So if you got one thousand CFMs coming from your unit, you need to have that same CFM amount in your four cars, whether it's ten, one hundred, or however you can bind it up. That, that way you're, you know, if you, if you stop the airflow, you're gonna just put back pressure, back static pressure, load your motor, and it's not, it's just not gonna work. So that's, it won't be that a good picture. I don't know if that helps, sir.
I know.
Look at him.
And the only reason I've kept it on the agenda, certainly the temperature being a concern, but, you know, technology is something that you really don't worry about as long as you can still come into work and it works just fine. But when it goes down, you're very aware of it, so I don't want any of that to surprise anyone. And I want to kind of keep this on high priority because of that temperature in that room. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Number fifteen, formal bid one one seven six dash one nine road materials to consider an act upon awarding RFP one one seven six dash one nine road materials. Fingers on the board, we're in the dash issue. Chris.
Uh, that's one of your weak lines for this. We made some changes from last year to this year, uh, just making it easier for Sebastian and his crew to get mainly hot mix quicker and in smaller batches, so.
So you awarded it to?
Awarded it to three different companies. So have a primary award and a secondary award. Primary is, but secondary is that we can't get it from the first. We have backup plan.
I make a motion that we approve the road and branch vendor recommendation.
Sir.
I have a motion in the second, on the favor of the chairman. Five zero, eight two. Number sixteen, RFP one one seven nine dash one nine elevator services to consider an act upon awarding request for proposal, RFP one one seven nine dash one nine elevator services to American Elevator. Contract term March fourth, 2019 through February twenty-eighth, 2022. With options to renew for two addition, one year contract.
Me again?
Our, um, I didn't know if you were gonna ask, I was just gonna go.
It doesn't matter, whoever wants to take it.
Um, we actually, we went away from, um, getting a, a vendor through a co-op that we did for the last probably five years and put it out for bid, uh, which is going to save us approximately.
Ten, ten thousand dollars?
Um, we had a walkthrough of all the buildings. We had five different companies show up for the walkthrough. We had three that actually submitted bids. Um, American Elevator, which actually has a, a location here in town. They, they bought a warehouse type of facility, uh, just right down the block from the Santa Fe Building. Uh, is the one that was recommended. Uh, they're actually the least expensive out of the three that came in. American also does, uh, City, and I spoke to the city and they're very happy.
Who was the vendor before that we used to do the co-op?
Yes, you're correct.
And so there, I remember some service issues, some call time issues around the elevators, but.
That was the main reason for, we, we do. Our technician was great, but in my opinion, it was kind of hung out the drive. So I, we made for the management and the salesmen the contract negotiation, it just wasn't, it wasn't handled well. And, uh, we had a elevator for this slide that was down, you know, and it was just, well, that's just how it is, that's how it is. So Chris did some digging and, uh, we started to walk through. It's actually written, it's based off of their contract that they should have been honoring. And, uh, it's really worked out very good. The technician for American is actually here, Eric is here, so, uh, is, is Tony, is Tony the boss? Is he the representative? What is his title?
Tony is over, uh, the American Elevator Division here in Amarillo. And he is also the construction superintendent in Oklahoma City. I physically run our office here in Amarillo. I oversee all of our facilities. You'll need, you'll need Tony, you know, anyway.
Thank you.
Well, for a person who's been stuck in the elevator before, uh, I can honestly say that response time is key.
That was my first, that was the first time I've gone, I've never gone out of town, so, uh, maybe not the first fifteen days here. And I'm not.
It wasn't awful, but.
It wasn't, it wasn't awful. You need a call, so.
It was, it was a long four days. Not like four days, it was only about forty-five minutes, but it's like.
The strange thing was, before I moved to, Michael in the Red River, he called me from Red River, he said, the judge is stuck in the ghetto.
It was comical now.
I make a motion that we approve the request for proposal one one seven nine dash one nine elevator services to American Elevator.
Sir.
Motion in the second, on the favor of the chairman.
And it's for Tony, is that your name, Mike? Tony?
Derek. Derek.
Derek, don't look at face. I want you to go by, okay, that's all, I just want to see the face.
We actually have two technicians here local, and then I have access to about twelve others within about a hour, three hour window.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, equipment purchase cost of number two, consider act upon purchase of the following items from WatchGuard. It's the HD camera bundle, model number BIS EXU, FIF, BUN, EIO. At a cost of six thousand one hundred fifty dollars each, funds are budgeted in the general fund.
This is the same agenda item?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, he has real, I forgot when last time, and, uh, I think it was out of town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Need a motion?
Move to the food, please, first to the five items. WatchGuard, this is the HD camera bundle, home, the PNAS, EXT, dash, the MAF, BUN, at a cost of six thousand one hundred two dollars.
Second?
Four.
I have a motion in the second, on the favor of the chairman. Five zero, eight two. Thank you. Number eighteen, deployment items, Robin Bridge to the Department of Roy, Sandy Burcom as maintenance tech as a replacement for Sergio Pardo, effective February sixth. And deployment of Seth Morgan as maintenance tech in return for Joe Chet, effective February twenty-fifth, 2019. And B, maintenance and facilities, retirement of Mike Head as Director of Maintenance and Facilities, effective February twenty-eighth. And number two, transfer Nick Nusswade from Assistant Director of Maintenance and Facilities to Director of Maintenance and Facilities, effective March fourth, twenty nineteen.
Because you approved all items listed.
Sir?
I move to approve all items listed.
Second, for a quick discussion, Judge, um, I, I just, I wanted to call out item B two. Uh, just a little concerned about not posting a position. And I certainly honor Nick, or honor Mike's request about who you'd like to, to fill that seat. But just from an administrative perspective, you know, anytime we're not officially posting a position, especially a director level position, I think there are, um, county questions. Um, I did receive a couple of calls from even inside of the county, so I just want to call that out to the whole community body, that there were some questions, not about, uh, whether Nick could certainly take on the position or, or was credentialed to take it on. It was just more the process, so I just want to make sure the court is aware.
I think that, I agree, I can agree with that, and I, I certainly agree with it, certainly have a full conversation to go, see to that, that, as far as against transparency and, and both, the judge and I have had a conversation too, so, uh, I'm speaking with that.
I have a motion in the second, on the favor of the chairman. On under master. Thank you. Number nineteen, Potter County Architect, are there any proposals you would like?
Like, you should do that.
You should do it.
It's your last time.
Oh, I did? Okay, okay. I would, as part of the project, I would say the architecture is, uh, that final payout, that, since everything else with it, uh, I believe the world, the sheriff, to go over, all outstanding, we have a few other ones. Uh, walk through what we did, the building more D and O, so it's our building, okay? We do that, we stay in order, so, so it's our, if your dog fell off, they're gonna, they're gonna hit us for that now, so it's our building. And, uh, anyway, uh, I don't have any other project, I think, uh, we're just speaking up.
Um, thank you for taking time. I know several of us have reached out to you for, um, individual tours of the district court's building, so I just want to say thank you. I know it takes time to take us one by one to do that, so I appreciate that.
Uh, I have three daughters. This morning, a little bit more got solved, a woman had intercepted a message from you, you intercepted.
A tour?
So, yes.
Wolford, okay.
Sometimes they give them a phone and do things, so.
Yeah.
They can send you some pushback, so I'm glad I'm not getting that too.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Number ten, the jail report, we have five hundred and ninety-nine people in our jails, taking seventy thousand emails, none are armed now, they're all there. Sixty-five percent are felons, ten percent are misdemeanors. We're assuming the other twenty-five percent are paper rated felons.
I just wanted to mention too, that we had our jail inspection a couple weeks ago, passed out the sliding colors. Um, it's kind of hard to say thanks to Scott, because he just took over out there, but I do appreciate his diligence and that. Uh, but it really is the staff that works out there that does that. Uh, he came in in a day and a half and finished, when I started, that was a three-day process. We have a guy that has everything right there ready to go, and he commented on that, and we met with him. Uh, so another pass, uh, so it was a good deal. Also, I invite y'all to come out and give that, take that opportunity to come out and thank our staff that's out there. But we're having a chili cook, uh, cook on March the first. It's all day, they're doing it on midnights and then days and evenings with that. Four dollars for chili or a free old pie, we'd love for you to come out. I'll even buy your, buy your lunch if you want to come out, but it's for sharing hope.
Don't share.
It's a, it's a fundraiser for sharing hope, and that's how we pay for a table over there for their hope fest, so. Um, I've got one lady that takes that on herself and does it every, every year. Be a great opportunity for guests to come out, tell the.
March the first?
March first.
No, literally, they didn't read it through the staff, because some of you, that's a poor, uh, just painful, you know.
Sheriff, are you guaranteed there's no onions in the chili?
Yeah, I can, I don't know, but I'm done.
This is the record, Scott, why don't you stand, let everybody see who you are. This is the captain of the jail now, he's the old jail, and, uh, that's Scott Jobs, he's been, how long he been here?
Twenty-nine years.
Twenty-nine years, yeah. So he's not, he's a new person, he's not, you know, better, that's what I'm talking about. Okay, are there any county insurance?
Uh, we have one, uh, one of these, uh, he's got a brother, I guess. Yeah, so he's mine.
Okay. Car, not so much?
Car, not so much.
It's a hard, it knocked him into another car, which knocked him into another car, so.
And he's okay? He's okay?
He's fine, he's in my house. Just the front car is, the front back of the car, oh, and no insurance either.
Oh, of course, of course, yeah, I had that. Okay, number twenty-two is cause of ignorance, do you believe, opposed many persons to Texas Department Code, uh, of law, point zero seven one, to seek advice of Council Department of Attorney, litigation. It is ten fifty-six, we hold recess. Okay, it is now ten oh five, going back from, she says. Uh, no, actually, second. Uh, number twenty-three, twenty-three, executive, sorry, can't talk. Twenty-three, executive session, we're just adding air. Or, or agenda items, or are we going to increase or reduce? Anybody else can think of any agenda items next time, maybe discuss right now? Okay, that is all, we are adjourned, thank you, then, Ray.